Because every once in a while, my computer goes kablooey. Okay, good. Welcome, everybody, to the Planning Commission of Portola Valley. We'll go ahead and get started. Shall we do roll call first?
Commissioner Tark is muted, but seems to be indicating that he's present. Commissioner Haskell.
Here.
Commissioner Golden.
Present.
Vice Chair Coughsill.
Here.
And Chair Taylor will be absent this evening.
Great. So shall we start off with public comments? And I think I see that most of the attendees are experienced at this, but this is your chance to talk about topics that are not on the agenda. So things that you might want to bring to the attention of the Planning Commission. And the way we'll do this is if you would like to speak, I'm talking to the attendees, please do your chat button, and then we'll recognize those and be able to call on you.
And I'm sorry, through the chair, you're going to use the raise your hand feature.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Raise your hand, not chat. Thank you. Thank you. Raise your hand feature.
So we there's some hands going up and down. I just want to make sure. Okay, we have Roger Pease.
Well, I have one comment and one question. I've been wondering how Anne was spending her time since she's no longer at Stanford nor on the Portola Valley.
Hey, Roger.
I just had one question. There's a lot of increased level of rumoring about affordable housing on the Sequoias property. And I think we all dislike rumors. And if we would like to know if those plans are being developed and at which stage they might be. And I think that would put a lot of my myself, my friends that like to know that. Thank you.
Good. Let me say, the discussion during this open time is for people to bring issues up. We don't usually aren't able to discuss them because if we're going to have a discussion, it needs to be on the agenda so other people can come. But is there anything we can say, just in a short way, Laura?
Very briefly, the Sequoias is in our affiliated housing program. They're an affiliated housing partner. So as part of the housing element, we do periodically communicate with them on any interest that they may have on doing affordable housing projects. So that communication does happen on a periodic basis. They have, you know, indicated that maybe sometime in the future, they may be interested in doing that. There's not an active pre-application. But we just had a very preliminary meeting with them in case they wish to do that in the future. So there are no plans. There's no pre-application. There's nothing that's been submitted to us at this time.
Great. Thanks. So are there any other things that residents would like to bring up to the Planning Commission in the oral communication section? I don't see any.
And I see Craig is trying to get our attention as our council member, maybe.
Oh, hey, Craig. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, just a quick comment on that last commenter. One thing that people may not know, our affiliate housing program is really designed to be for staff housing essentially at the Sequoias. So it would potentially be below market rate, but the intention would probably generally be for that to be for Sequoias staff. So not necessarily open to anyone to live there, but a little bit more targeted.
Great. Thanks. Hope that answers your question, Roger. Great. I see no more hands up for oral communication. So we'll go to our regular agenda. And the first one is an application for modification to the town's ground movement potential map for 195 Remoso. And the way we usually do this is have a staff report, and then the commissioners ask questions of the staff about the report. And then we, then after that, there's a chance for residents to make comments or add input. And then the commission comes back and talks about it. So I guess I'll ask Dylan or Laura for a staff report.
I'm doing the report, so I will go ahead and share my screen. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Just trying to situate everybody on my screen. All right. I thank you, Chair Copsill and the members of the commission. This item tonight is a request to modify the town's geologic and ground movement potential maps. And so just to give some background on this property, the subject property is a 2.77 acre site that's located at the northerly end of Remoso Road's cul-de-sac. On the slide, the site is within the town's RE zoning district and has an average slope of 30.82%. So going into the modification request, based on site exploration and reconnaissance, that was that's further detailed in their limited, in the project team's limited fault investigation report, which was included as attachment three of staff report. The applicant's geotechnical engineer concluded that the fault trace shown along the northeastern portion of the subject site on both on both town maps is not an accurate location of the fault trace. And so it's noted here on this diagram as the old trace. And the proposed map modification would shift the fault trace to the south from what is shown on the town's geologic and ground movement potential maps and would now transect across the front upper portion of the subject site. And so that's also noted, this is the geologic map that's provided. It's the revised trace on this diagram. And so also, the consultant is proposing a 10-foot minimum habitation setback along the proposed fault location with a five-foot, five-foot being on both sides of the line. And the setback is designed to mitigate any geotechnical hazards that may occur during an earthquake. And so just now turning to the map modification discussion. So with the town geologist's recommendation, the Planning Commission can modify the town's geologic maps through resolution 2746-2017. The town geologist has concurred with the project geotechnical consultant's findings that the fault trace location on town maps was inaccurate, and the current location was further south on the subject property and also on the adjacent property 191 Remoso. Just to just to inform the Planning Commission, 194, 191 Remoso was informed of this inaccurate fault location in 2014 through a geotechnical report. They had commissioned for a new garage and retaining wall on their property. And so given tonight's modification affects more than one parcel, staff intends to send a letter to 191 Remoso informing them of tonight's formal action. Additionally, the modification data, if approved tonight, will be placed in both affected parcel files. And lastly, the town maps will just be updated accordingly. And so in conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission consider the application, the staff's report and public comments tonight. The town geologist recommendation and adopt a resolution to approve the proposed map modifications. This concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Great. Briefly, through the chair, John Wallace from Cotton Shires and Associates, the town geologist is also here tonight, if there's any questions for him.
Okay, great. So now the my commissioner, fellow commissioners will ask questions. Is that right? So do other people have questions of Dylan? Go ahead, John.
Hey, Dylan. So affecting the 191 Remoso. My assumption is that this is a positive, this would be a positive news for them to have the town map changed?
Without them, if they're in the audience, I would I would caution to say, speak on their behalf. I'll answer it in in a professional experience perspective, being that they were informed in 2014 of the inaccurate location and that their property was affected. The legwork, if you will, was done by 195 Remoso. So in that aspect, it would be a positive. But in respect to other items related to real estate matters or whatnot, I wouldn't have any frame of reference on that matter.
I'm confused about why it would be positive. Because if you move the mapping of the trace on the map, it implicates constraints on where you can build, correct? Am I understanding this right?
The fault trace location typically has what's called a human habitation setback. So generally, no habitable structures could be constructed within that area. From town, from my perspective, the fault was there all along. It's just the accuracy of the town map is being updated. It's kind of how I'm viewing this in a frame of reference. My my guesstimate or my assumption would be if 191 Remoso was concerned about what was identified in that 2014 geotech investigation they did for the new garage, I would imagine that they would have came in for a map modification request similar to 195 Remoso. So that's why I was challenged to weigh in on positive or negative light of this. I would prefer that the homeowners at 191 Remoso be able to opine on the impact of this accurate fault location.
Sure. I guess my my request is for a little more context of how we got to this point. Did, is this a normal standard analysis that would be conducted by the owners of 195 in order to replace the existing structure? Just if you could, for the record, just say how this came up? And that would, I think, help for the record on our discussion.
So I can clarify. So it sounds like the question is, what was the driving or motivation to do a map modification? And I under, okay. I will defer to the owners to address that more. My understanding is there is an eventual demolition of the existing residence and construction of a new residence. So that is my understanding, but I will defer to the owners for more background on the motivation for conducting the investigation and their geotech consultant, who is also in the audience.
So first of all, thank you to the council. My name is Tom Lynch, and I'm joined by my wife Myrna. So we purchased this. We're in the process of purchasing this property in November of 2019, effectively from the owners of this property. So it was developed in the late 50s, early 60s in the estate of the original owners. We purchased this property. As part of purchasing this property, we discovered this inferred fault line that ran in the current site map that runs from north to south on the east side of the property. And although the property is fairly large in size, at 2.7 acres, as was discussed, as the slope is to the east is quite extreme. And so just to put that into context, the actual buildable land on this property is somewhat finite, I'd say, or, you know, if you do not want to impact sort of the native trees and everything on that property. You have a reasonably small land is relatively. And we don't, we, I'm sure we'll be in front of this council in the future. So I mean, it's, it's not that we intend to build a huge structure, to be honest with you. So it's not that we're trying to build some massive structure. However, the fault inferred fault line, if you read the town records, suggests that the setbacks from an inferred fault line could be as big as 200 feet. And if you were to take that inferred fault line on the map and draw 200 feet from that, it would effectively take a piece of property and make it unbuildable, effectively unbuildable. So as part of the purchasing of this property, we discussed this. And it causes us to accelerate this process to really determine where this fault really was. Because again, if you don't know where it is, by definition, I think the town is very conservative. We'll just say in this fault setback. So that's what propagated this initial discussion, which then led to us doing a lot of borings fairly, I mean, this, just to put context on this. This analysis probably about $40,000. So it was not trivial. But it was a where is it really? Is it really where we think it is? We don't know. So we want to find out. So that was the first phase. And the second thing, which was more advanced and is also included in the document, was we actually did a 40-foot trench in this property about 60 feet to really understand how this fault behaves. Was it significant? Was it active? And we did that, we conducted, we did that through Murray Engineering. But as part of that process, we invited the the town geologist to actually inspect this pretty much this entire process. So they inspected this work along the way. So to answer your question, to get to a long answer to your question, that's how we got to the point. The fault was always there. Somebody building a structure would have to do some borings and some geotech work across their properties anyway. And so we are just trying to clarify what wasn't unknown and make it a known effectively. That's the purpose. So that we can plan accordingly. I mean, it is what it is. The fault is there. It's not where people thought it was.
Yeah. And and just to paraphrase, oh, sorry.
Yeah. And I was just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you short. But subsequently, you know, due to like perk tests and things of that nature, we've actually done more boring. So we're even more convinced now that we know exactly where it is. So or where it's not.
So I'll finish now. But the if you had to work with the old inferred, it would preclude a lot of potential planning of the new structure. Working with a more refined analytically based site of the fall may create more opportunity for you. Is that essentially right?
Or do I go to more detail? We would not have bought the property.
Okay.
The property, if you if you applied the inferred fault and applied the rules that the planning commission is generally says, which is on an inferred fault that has huge setbacks, I wouldn't have purchased the property because the space would have been non-buildable. I'll go on the fact, this fault actually goes through the existing property today. So if you want to go to the extreme, it goes through the garage of the existing property.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? I guess I have a question on the follow-up. So you did this work before you purchased? You got this report before you purchased the property? Is that right?
The timeline of it was, we did the initial identification of where the fault was prior to the purchase of the property in November of 2019. The trench work to determine how the setback or the proposed setback was actually done post that time, it was completed. I think the report was dated January of 2020. We actually closed on the property around Thanksgiving of 2019 to the end of November. So it is sort of two phases to answer your question.
Okay.
Location, and then we'll say identification of magnitude of risk. And at that time, which determined the setback with the geological, and I'll let them speak, but the geologists were trying to determine was, is this fault straight up and down? Is it this way? Because if it's this way, then the setback needs to be greater. So it was a determination of this shear. Is there movement on this fault? The answer was no. And then the second question is, what angle is the fault at? Obviously, the steeper the angle, the more the setback on one side versus the other.
And I guess maybe this is for the town geologists. If if a fault is inferred, it has a 200-foot setback. But if it's, you dig a trench and you really know where it is, then you might only have 10 feet. I guess I was a little surprised that it went from unbuildable to now, oh, now we know exactly where the fault is and are a lot better.
Well, that's not entirely correct. So the San Andreas Fault is treated much differently than these, what we'll call secondary faults that run through the West Ridge area. If we don't know where the San Andreas Fault is, there are there are much greater setbacks due to the uncertainty and the threat level that that fault poses. So these lesser faults, although we don't like to cite any structures across them, we like to know where they are. And we mandate that if there is a fault trace running through a property, that the applicant's consult, geotechnical consultant locates it, determines its its character, and then we can judge based on, you know, site-specific information, what a reasonable setback is. And I used this example with Laura earlier in the week. There was a fault, a very similar fault running through the tennis club down Los Trancos Woods, and they found this fault. And one side of the fault had pristine bedrock. Wasn't fractured. It was as good a bedrock as you could get. On the other side of the fault was highly sheared, ruptured, beat-up rock. And so the setback on one side of that fault, we felt much more comfortable snuggling up closer to the fault. Whereas on the sheer upside, we said, hey, you got to give that one some more room. And that was all based on an investigation very similar to what Murray did here. They initially drilled borings to identify the different rock types that are known to be juxtaposed against each other, and with this fault being the interface. And so just by sheer drilling borings and pulling out samples, John Stillman could figure out very closely where that fault trace ran through the property. And once they had a good idea, then they investigated it with a trench so that they could get down in there, judge its character, its dip angle, whether there was any shearing. And so that's exactly what they did, and it's a very good investigation. We agreed with their techniques, and we agreed with their results. And to be to be honest, the fault exposure, I'll use that term loosely, was not sheared. It was not typical of some of these faults that we've seen elsewhere in town, such as the one over by the tennis club. This one had very little, if any, shearing. And I would judge it to be a fault that's very near its end. Some of these these short faults that run through West Ridge, they have a very short length, and they'll start petering out, or they're older faults, and so they'll get folded. And so this this particular area, and I recommended stopping the fault. So prior to the map modification, the fault stopped at the town boundary. So we just, where John found it, we don't, we really don't think it's it's a threat at all. They they're keeping it on the map as conservatively that, hey, there, it's possible that there could be some sympathetic movement on this. It would be very small. But we agree, it's possible, it's highly unlikely. So if we stop the fault where we show it on the revised, it doesn't make it to 190, the residents at 191 Remoso. But still, if they were to do anything on their property, regardless of where, whether the fault is where it is now or before, they would still need to address it and deal with it. But it's not, it's not the end of the world. It's just doing exactly what Murray engineers did and find it. Once you know where it is, you can you can build around it and accommodate that small setback, because it's not a huge setback.
Great. Thanks a lot. That's good. Let's see. So now it's time for public comments. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak? We'll do the raise your hand feature again.
And we do have one person that's on the phone. If you're on the phone, do star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, I don't see any chat hands going up. So we'll bring it or keep it with the commission for discussion. May I start with you, John?
So this one seems relatively simple in that the town geologist and the expert trenching, the work that was done to identify it seems to be pretty clear. I think our role as the Planning Commission on this is primarily to look at it from a process perspective and make sure the process was properly followed. So in my opinion, that certainly has been followed in this case. And I wouldn't see any reason not to not to approve this.
Great. Thanks. May I go to you now, Judith?
Yeah, I agree with John. It clearly has been done by professionals, and I defer to their their judgment, of course, on all of this. My only real concern is a negative impact, if any, were to be possible on 191 without them participating. But if I read correctly, they have been noticed about this evaluation previously. And you will be reaching out to them after tonight's meeting to give them direct feedback rather than letting them try and sort it out, right, Laura? Is that correct, the process wise?
That's correct. We'll give them notification of the outcome of this meeting directly to them so that they have it for their records.
Yeah.
One comment, sorry, Judith, one comment to your the relocation of the the revised trace points very closely toward their house. And so we don't, and this issue has come up for years and years and years in the town is if you find a fault on one property and you end up moving it, it could impact, you know, additional properties. And in this case, what John Stillman and Murray engineers found was a fault that we think is is dead. And there are other regional geologic maps in that cover this area, not the town map, but other professional geologists have mapped this same contact between two rock types as not being a fault. So there is some disagreement amongst geologists, and the town map took a conservative angle on this. And I think what Murray engineers found was more in line with what some of the other professional geologists have mapped here is that this is not even a fault at all. So that's why we don't want to extend it through the residents of 191, even though at 195, it points right at it. So we're going to stop it pretty close to the property line and put a question mark. And if any application on 191 does come up, as the town geologist, we make them do their diligence and drilling holes, and they'll find the same things that Murray did, that if they hit, you know, one rock type in one place during their investigation, they'll be able to refine it and adjust accordingly. So I think that's the way we would like to handle it, and I think that's the way it makes the most sense, given its unfault-like character that we've seen. unfault-like character that we've seen.
Yeah, I guess I I could make one comment. A great presentation, Dylan. John did a great job and kind of succinctly relating the issue. With regard to 191, when we first were in the process of evaluating this fault, we reviewed a report which was explicitly discussing the fault change. That was a 2014 investigation that was done by a prior geologic consultant. So they did identify in that report, John, I don't know if you have a copy of it, but I can get that to you. They relayed, you know, they they knew of the the contact and they made an assumption that it was likely, you know, very close to where we had it mapped on the south side of the property. And so as a part of their geotechnical investigation for the garage addition, they did provide geologic input, which I think the town had reviewed at the time. But I don't think they came in to do a map modification.
Right, okay.
Anything else, Judith?
No, I I think if I'm understanding that correctly, we're not making a decision today that impacts 191. The decision today will be what is the modification as it relates to 195? And when and if 191 wants to do something, they'll have an independent ability to reassess. So I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Okay, great, great. Nicholas, would you like to weigh in?
Yes. I generally tend to agree this technical issue and so the latitude that the planning commission has is limited to the findings, which I I think are, at least from our perspective, best made with the information received from the town experts and the expert geologists rather than substituting our judgment for that. The only question that I have is whether it really is appropriate to show the trace fault at all at this point? Or if there is a generalized consensus that this is a dead fault, whether there's reason to clean it up? I don't know. Actually, I guess the issue is before us. I was about to say, we could make the findings, have the map modified, but I think that if I I would like to understand better whether this is in fact a dead fault, if there is a consensus. I think we should let our applicant move forward. But if we should clean up our maps now, based on the information, I I don't see a reason why we wouldn't do that. So I guess, and I apologize, I recognize that this is a commission discussion, and this is asking our experts another question. So I I reaching back outside. But it is an issue that I think just surfaced, and I would be interested in knowing.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, John. I think that's, yeah.
No, it's a very good question.
Yeah, it is.
It's one that, you know, as the town geologist, we've been dealing with these issues on a variety of faults and one that will be front and center with the Stanford project, where the town, based on our recommendations, removed a section of a fault. I know Murray Engineers has trenched this fault in other areas in town and has found it to be a lot more fault-like in other areas closer to West Ridge, I believe. Even though that fault may not be active, it's certainly had a more fault-like character. And there there are a couple of reasons, if you know that the fault is there, to keep it on the town map and show it as a trace, a secondary trace is there are engineering properties that come into play where one side of the fault may be underlaid by, you know, a very prominent inert, say, there's no granite in town, but if if one side was granite and the other side was claystone, a claystone will suck up water and it'll swell or it'll dry out and it'll shrink. You put a foundation on that and it'll start moving all over the place. If there's a fault that separates that type of material from granite and you straddle that with your building, you're going to get differential movement. So just from an engineering property standpoint, if we know a fault is there, it separates different rock types, it's worth keeping it on the map and making consultants find it just for that reason alone. And if we do think it's got some activity, then obviously, you know, we want to keep it on the map. But it's a good question and and we've we've got information on this fault. This is the furthest to the northwest that, you know, I think, John, you found it in a couple of other areas.
Yeah, yeah, I did on in West Ridge. Actually, we didn't find it as Steve Connolly, but we reviewed a report that they did in which involved several trenches. And it did seem like there was more of a sheer, shared rock unit within the fault zone. And I agree with John's interpretation that we were kind of struggling with this contact as we weren't seeing much sharing and we made kind of a engineering conservative judgment that there might be some sharing at depth. And and kind of forming a conclusion that it is different, different bedrock conditions. So it's probably, you know, a five-foot setback is not significant. If there was concern about fault rupture, it would be larger than that. So in in my opinion, I'm not concerned. I would likely call it a dead fault, but, you know, not completely. You know, guaranteed that that's the case with depth, but I I feel like probably keeping it on the map would be good at this point because of John's kind of point on on differing bedrock conditions. I think that's something that is pursued and interpretations are are looked into on in other areas, other town areas like La Salto Hills and so forth. So.
Thank you very much. That was really helpful. I'm inferring that while we have a degree of confidence that it is a dead fault, it would be worth investigating the the nature of that fault further in the event someone wants to to build on it because there are other aspects or other locations along that fault line that may be more live. And two, there are also issues, potential differential soil type, which would have different geographical aspects. And leaving it here would at least be a flag that those may be that this may may exist it. From my perspective, having a a fault line identified, you know, does put you through a different process, this process versus having other potential for differentials that don't so that there 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 may be a better way of of sending that signal rather than including it. On the other hand, it sounds like there may be some aspects of the fault that have that may be live and certainly happy to defer to to your expertise and your recommendation. And also recognizing that we should not hold up the good in in search of the best for the applicant who is presently before us. So I appreciate that. I have no further questions and I see no problem moving forward.
Great, thank you. And I agree with my fellow commissioners that it seems straightforward and I'm not inclined to second or to reanalyze the experts' opinions. So and and I like the ideas explained to keep it as a fault just to, because of the different bedrock types. With that, I think we could entertain a motion for the resolution that's in our packet.
I would move that we approve the modification to the town's ground movement potential map per the application by 195 Ramoso.
I second that motion.
Okay, great. And is there any more discussion on that motion? I don't think so. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution passes. Great, thanks, everyone. And thanks to the homeowners for commissioning that work and the geologists for doing the work and reviewing it.
You're welcome.
All right, you're welcome.
All right, take care, everybody.
Take care.
Great. So our second and final topic on the agenda is a an application for an exception to the town's utility undergrounding requirement for 142 Crescent that we talked about before, I think in December. See, and we'll do the same procedure. We'll have a staff report and then commissioners will ask questions. And then there'll be a chance for the public to give comments if they'd like to, and then we'll come back for discussion. So Dylan or Russell, is there a staff report?
Yes, I'll share my screen. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair and members of the Commission. So the item for you this evening is a request for an exception to the town's utility undergrounding requirements. And so just to go through the subject property again, the subject property is located on the north side of Crescent Avenue with a distribution line located at the street frontage and a secondary wire located approximately halfway along the shared property line with 139 Crescent Avenue. The secondary wire connects to a shared pole that has service drops for both the subject property and 139 Crescent. So at the December 2nd to 2020 hearing, the planning commission considered the request for exception and determined that additional information was required to continue consideration of the request. Specifically, three areas of information were identified in the discussion. The legislative intent of the town's undergrounding requirements, PG&E's trench design parameters, and Woodside Fire Protection District's position on undergrounding exception requests. So the next slides will discuss these three areas of additional information in detail. Also, the commission noted that only the electric vehicle charging station and the solar photovoltaic system permit should be considered in staff's cost-burden analysis, which will be further detailed in the cost-burden analysis section later on in this presentation. So turning to the legislative intent of the code, in reviewing the historical record for the town's undergrounding requirements, staff concludes that the legislative intent behind the requirements was aesthetics. In a 1990 commission hearing where amendments to the requirements were considered, the undergrounding requirements were considered, aesthetics was the primary discussion topic. Also, the topic of cost burden and practicable, practical ability were broached. Furthermore, discussion in a 1990 town council hearing to adopt the amendments centered around overhead cable TV wires. There is no mention in the historic record of fire or any public health or safety reasons for the town's undergrounding requirements. So now turning to the PG&E trench design requirements. So to better understand the trench design process, staff reached out to the town's PG&E new service representative. The representative described the design process in two phases. The homeowner pays a deposit for the design plan and PG&E sends out a field inspector to determine a path of travel for the trench. Then PG&E designs the trench and sends plans to the homeowner. The trench's path is designed, generally, the path of travel design is generally preferred to be direct. However, a more indirect path can be designed with a maximum of 590-degree angles allowed. The path must be separated at least three feet from underground wet utilities such as sewer, water, French drains on a parallel run. So similarly in the grave. If the trench is perpendicular to the utilities, so they cross paths, it may have a one-foot separation. This design does not factor into impact of trees or other aspects of the property. PG&E assumes those factors are handled either by the town or other entities. In the second phase of design, either PG&E or the homeowner's trench contractor performs the work on-site as designed. PG&E, if PG&E were doing the work, they would send a field inspector to the site to monitor trench work and make field changes as necessary. If the trench is being installed by the homeowner's contractor, then the trench work is overseen by them, but they must conform to the PG&E's trenching requirements. And so these are commonly referred to as PG&E's Green Book, which is available on PG&E's website to contractors performing this type of work. Additionally, the rep also noted that 100 amp to 200 amp service upgrades are commonplace these days. And most people requesting the upgrades are installing either electrical vehicle charging stations or solar photovoltaic systems or both at an existing residence. And so now turning to the fire district's feedback related to exceptions. So staff reached out to senior fire inspector Marshall Heard to determine the fire district's position on underground exception request. Just for context, Inspector Heard, senior fire inspector Heard is the the person that generally reviews, plan reviews for planning and building permits. And Marshall Heard expressed general support for granting these exceptions. And additionally, the homeowner reached out to fire marshal Don Bullard to determine their position on this particular exception request before you tonight. Fire marshal Bullard was supportive of granting this exception. And so just turning back to the town code requirements, as required by town code, the applicant would be required to underground the overhead utilities serving the overhead electric, overhead electric service serving the property because the electrical panel service is increasing to 200 amps. Per town code, the planning commission has the authority to grant an exception to the requirement if they determine that the underground installation is not feasible or practicable and there is no reasonable alternative location or design for the installation of the underground lines. And so this is the utility plan of the subject property. This was provided at the last meeting. Staff is providing this again just for more context. So the the utility plan notes the overhead service, which is the red line, the underground water main, which is the blue line, and then the location of the service meter for the property, which is the green line. Also, this plan notes the location of a 13-inch oak tree, which is considered a significant tree per town code. An Arbor's report that was detailing the adverse impact of the proposed trenching to this tree was included in staff's December 2nd, 2020 report to the commission. Okay, and so now turning to previously granted exceptions. So historically, the planning commission has used the following areas of consideration for granting exceptions. In this exception request, the proposed trenching would adversely impact one significant tree, impact underground utilities such as a water main and French drain system, and result in a 148% increase to the cost of the original project's valuation. So the applicant notes in their request letter that the solar photovoltaic system and electrical vehicle charging station will cost 15,200. However, the submitted bill However, the submitted building permit for the solar panel installation is valued at sixteen thousand. So at the request of the planning commission during their December the second twenty twenty meeting, staff only utilized this job valuation of sixteen thousand in its cost burden analysis. So the additional trenching cost, which is based on the electrician's quote of seven thousand three hundred and fifty and the trenching contractor's quote of sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty is totaled at twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ten. This equates to a two hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-six cents per linear foot cost for the undergrounding. The path of travel would be eighty-two linear feet. So thus, the additional cost to the original valuation is that one hundred and forty-eight percent increase. So therefore, staff concludes that there is adequate support for the planning commission to find that the undergrounding requirement is not feasible or practicable. And there is no reasonable alternative location or design for the installation of the underground lines as follows. One, the location of the existing underground water main and French drain would be adversely impacted by the undergrounding requirements. Two, the location of existing significant trees would be adversely impacted by the undergrounding requirements. And three, there would be an additional burden of a hundred and forty-eight percent cost increase to the applicant. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission move to find the project exempt from environmental review per section fifteen three oh two D of CEQA and move to approve the requested exception to the town's utility undergrounding requirements as described in the draft resolution provided as attachment one of staff's report to the commission. This concludes staff's presentation.
Great. Thank you, Dylan. Let me move to the commissioners then. Let me start with Judith. Do you have any questions for Dylan?
Just to clarify the the cost comparison, what what portion of the overall project is the baseline? And then what's the increase? If you could just go over that one more time. Thanks.
Sure. So the cost for this, so my understanding of the question is what is the cost of the original project and what is the added cost for the underground trenching? Okay, the and I'll share my screen again, so that would be more helpful than me rambling. Can you see my screen or do I need to shift?
Yes.
Okay. Let me go to the slide. Okay, so the original project, the solar photovoltaic job valuation was sixteen thousand. And then the additional cost to do the undergrounding work, which was the electrician and the trenching contractor was twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ten, which derived that one forty-eight percent increase.
So it's a hundred forty-eight percent of the original project value. It's not an increase of a hundred forty-eight percent. I just want to make sure I'm talking about the right thing.
Um, correct. So it would be, it would be, you would be adding, that's correct. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I think I think that's subtly incorrect. Actually, the total cost, if you did both, would be thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. So you're adding, it's plus one hundred and forty-eight, not times one hundred and forty-eight percent.
Okay.
Good. Any other questions? Okay, great. Nicholas, any questions from you?
No, I I have no questions having just done some trenching recently myself involving electric power lines, which went very smoothly with the town's oversight. I suggest that some strong backs and some good judgment be exercised going forward. And the reliance on PG&E may not always be necessary.
And John, any questions for from you for the staff?
No, I have no questions.
So I have just a few. Dylan, when we looked at this in December, there were two projects. One was, I think, a remodel that was in the four hundred thousand range. And then there was also what you're quoting now, the solar panels and the electric vehicle hookup. You know, a lot hinges on whether we take the we say the undergrounding was triggered by the just the solar and the electric vehicle. Or if it was, if it were to be triggered by the whole project, because you know, if it's four hundred thousand, then it's a five percent increase instead of a hundred and forty-eight. Um, oh, and then since we're the planning commission, I want to be careful and thoughtful about, you know, I don't want people in the future, you know, slicing and dicing their project to make it look like the new electrical was just for a dishwasher or something when they're doing a whole big remodel. Um, in this case, the 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 other remodel, did I know in some cases a remodel actually requires some upgrade to accommodate solar and electric vehicle. In this case, would the four hundred thousand dollar remodel trigger that or they they really could be completely separate? You know, I also don't want to encourage homeowners to like if, you know, come with one application and then come with a separate application. I mean, we don't need to be, you know, make hoops to jump through. So I guess my question is, did the base remodel here require this solar and electric vehicle?
Let me try to, let me start kind of conceptually is that I agree that this is a challenging thing to think through. And when the commission thought about the project and we talked about it in December, I think our impression from the commission was you thought that those projects could be separated and that they should be in this case. I think you looked at facts of this individual case and made that recommendation to staff. So like many things that the commission does, you want to look at the individual case and make sure that you feel like your determination is based on those facts and those can vary. And I think in terms of, you know, some of the challenges that we discussed last time, we talked about utility undergrounding. Staff would actually recommend that the commission think about that a little bit more. You do have authority within the code to set some procedures around that. So I would actually propose that we talk a little bit. I was going to bring it up in the staff discussion a little bit later tonight in terms of how we address these more generally. But I think in terms of this case, I think we, the commission found that those two projects could be separated.
Okay, good. So it wasn't required in this case that the homeowner had to do the solar and the electric vehicle, whereas because there are some projects in town where to get approval for the the thing you're doing requires the solar and the electric vehicle, right? But not in this case.
Yeah, so that was my understanding that that the we clearly should separate it in this particular case because that it was this solar photovoltaic that triggered the undergrounding and the rest of it would not have triggered it. So.
Yeah, and and to Anne's question, I posed that to the PG&E representative and also to the town's building official or person that we reach out to when we have building code questions. And so the building code only requires a hundred amp service, but the PG&E representative identified some areas and the building, our building consultant also identified same areas. The first is typically homeowners do upgrade to two hundred amp service for electric vehicle and solar photovoltaic systems, just because they want the additional capacity for other items. And so a hundred amp service is kind of like throttling your your capacity for other things. Secondly, and this was, both of them made this comment individually, is a lot of jurisdictions are moving towards prohibiting gas appliances and so electric only. And so what that does is that creates additional capacity, right? Because a gas stove versus an electric stove, gas furnace versus electric furnace. So that actually pushes the needle towards having to upgrade your service to maybe not a hundred, two hundred, but maybe to a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty. And so the PG&E representative informed, you know, discussed that it's usually cost beneficial to go from a hundred to two hundred. So that way in the future you have more flexibility. But in terms of an actual remodel, it's the the EV charging, for this particular project, it was the EV charging station and the solar panel installation was, those were the drivers to recommend the upgrade by the electrician for the homeowner. That was the the driver for that. The other project was, it was a straight remodel, but they weren't doing those two components. And so that's where the kind of the bifurcation is on those two, from my understanding and perspective.
Okay, thanks. And this is just a comment, but I am pleased to hear the response from PG&E that they could allow, maybe they're not thrilled with it, but five right angle bends that surprised me. In some of our other discussions, we'd heard comments like, oh, no, PG&E won't allow any any kinks in the thing, you know, five right angles is would get you around at least one big tree, maybe two.
Yes, they did mention that, but they said reluctantly. They said they always prefer a direct path. They said the more indirect or circuitous path would, of course, increase the cost appropriately. And one of the things too, as they said, typically what happens with trees, they don't really consider that in the design phase. It's more of those underground utilities, the wet utilities. So trees are really not a factor of determination. So it would be something that the town may have to interject in the process to determine the path of travel, but with the kind of the division of labor, if you will, between PG&E doing the design and us doing us as the town, it's it's kind of a it's kind of a nuanced process of who actually who moves first to make sure that that tree is protected. So that was kind of also factored in that conversation. They were reluctant to do a less than direct path.
Thanks. Okay, great. Thanks, everyone. Okay, so I think we're done with questions from the commissioners. We'll move to input from the residents. So if anybody would like to make a comment, please use the chat function. Oh, Craig would like to talk. Go ahead.
I, yes, I, this is not necessarily a comment about the specific project. And I think you have, you know, all the information you need to decide on this particular project. I was curious to see that you were asking about the legislative intent behind creating this ordinance. And and clearly that is, at the time, the big consideration was the aesthetics. I I don't think you should probably weigh that too heavily because I don't think this council or any future council is likely to repeal this ordinance, have another discussion and reenact an identically worded ordinance to recreate the same code because we have a different reason. So fire safety, I think, is one that we're all very aware of these days around undergrounding. And I think reaching out to the fire marshal for their opinion on a request like this is entirely appropriate. And so even though it wasn't necessarily considered at the time of the original legislation, I think it's entirely appropriate to consider that with this or any other project.
Great, thanks.
And through the chair, would you like to give the applicant an opportunity to present to the commission before you go to the public?
Oh, that'd be great. Yes, yes. I didn't see the applicant, but that'd be good.
Hi, Lance Downing. No, thanks very much for hearing this again. I I think everything's been covered. I don't I don't think I have anything to add.
Great. Okay, thank you. Oh, I see one hand up from Christie Corley.
Okay, just a second. Okay, here's Christie.
Hi, thank you. I'm just wondering if the town has negotiated with PG&E to lower or reduce or negotiate costs as many people will be wanting to put in the same thing that the applicant is putting in. So I know we used to have a undergrounding committee, and I'm not sure if that committee has met recently. But can you update me on our negotiations with PG&E? Does it cost two thousand dollars just to get an estimate? It just seems high. And I guess that's my question. Thank you.
Great. I'm glad to see Craig's hand raised. Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm actually the liaison to the Cable and Undergrounding Committee as well. And so I can I can give you an update there. PG&E is incredibly difficult to work with and extremely expensive anytime any undergrounding is involved. And they're very inflexible also. So the town has been pursuing its own undergrounding projects, underground some wires along a very short section of Alpine Road for approximately the last decade, which is about the pace at which PG&E moves on these things. And they're, they keep quoting us higher and higher and higher costs every time we have a conversation with them. So we've effectively abandoned that project because they just you can't have a discussion about lowering costs with them. It's not, it's not in PG&E's DNA to have those kinds of discussions.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so we'll go on to discussion with the commission. Let me start with Judith again.
Well, it's been very helpful to see the updated information. I think appreciate the follow-up, the the refinement of the cost estimate, the outreach to the fire district. And you know, the the further feedback on what PG&E will will and won't do. To me, in light, the the whole balance, I end up getting comfortable being able to approve this as proposed. I think it is burdensome. The cost increase of a hundred forty-eight percent is steep. And while I recognize that there could be kind of manipulation of that framework, I think we as a commission just have to keep our eye on it going forward. But I I could get comfortable approving the resolution myself.
Great, thanks. Nicholas?
Between the further explanation and the fire marshal's decision on the matter, I'm similarly disposed.
Okay, great. And John?
Um, I see this as primarily a cost concern. I know we talked about the trees and we talked about the other utilities, but I think those two problems in this case would easily be solved by a little rerouting. I mean, not only not, you know, maybe one turn, if you will. But of course, that would be a longer trench, so the price would be even higher. So so I, so I, in my mind, it just comes down to the cost and I see that as being out of line for what we're, the benefit for the town on this in terms of the smallest value versus what it would cost the applicant. So I I definitely can go for this.
Okay, thanks. And for me, I I am also, I guess, similar to John, I I actually am in favor of people rerouting. I don't want people to use like, oh, I got a tree in the way. I feel like, yeah, Portola Valley has big important trees. That's just going to be be a be a given. So some rerouting, I would demand that of homeowners in order to achieve the undergrounding. I am sympathetic to the cost and I think we, you know, there's a judgment, I think in the past I've said, and I think others have agreed that wealth is five or 10% of a project. The homeowner has to pay that. But when it gets up to a hundred and forty-eight percent, that's too much. And I am concerned about the, I'd like to, I'm glad Laura said. Uh, and I am concerned about the, I'd like to, I'm glad Laura said we're going to think through. I feel like a lot of these are coming up and that to me tells me that it's just not clear. Either the regulations aren't written with enough refinement so that homeowners kind of know what the answer is before they come to us. Things have to come to us. So I'm enthusiastic about discussing kind of the principles, but in this case, I'm going to be in favor of granting an exception. Okay, um, thanks for the discussion. I guess we're ready for a motion on the resolution that was in our package.
I'll move to approve the, the resolution on 142 present.
Second.
Great. Is there any more discussion by the commission? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? I don't think so. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Great. And let me get back to my agenda.
Thank you, Lance.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And so now we're to commission reports. Is there anything there? And how about staff reports?
Oh, on this topic of utility undergrounding and exceptions, the code does have a provision that the planning commission can establish policies for administration of this section. And based on the conversations that we've had, I do think it would be a good idea to establish some policies on how you would like to see these reviewed and what information you would like to receive with the initial application so that we can collect the right information from the applicants. We also, staff has been thinking about this trigger of between from 100 amps, which used to be pretty standard up to 200 amps, which is now pretty standard. When the code was written, there wouldn't have been the number of obviously solar projects and EV charging stations that we see today and that we certainly want to encourage and process a lot of those applications. So staff has two suggestions for your consideration. One would be that we convene a meeting of the mayor and the chairs of both the planning commission and the ASCC. We staff has another topic that that group may consider. And so we could bring this topic of utility undergrounding to that group, which is kind of the cross-section and includes the mayor. So we could get some council feedback on whether this is something we should consider in more depth and think about, maybe we need to think about that code requirement of 100 to 200 amps, if that's still appropriate. Or if there should be certain other exceptions that should be granted. And then I think after that, maybe we come back to the planning commission as an item on the agenda so that we could get some feedback from you on what you'd like to see for our applications and how you'd like to review them. And like, for example, would be that we would route it to the fire district on a regular basis for all applications. You know, that's an obvious one that's come out of this discussion. Just to make sure that we can process these in a timely fashion and give them, give you what you're looking for. So those would be our two suggestions. If there's interest from the commission and pursuing either of both of those things.
I'm sorry, Laura, I didn't quite follow. I understood the first one convene a meeting with the mayor and the chairs. What was exactly the second one?
The second one would be to put an item on your agenda for discussion. Discuss utility underground applications in general and to receive your feedback.
Okay, got it.
And the public's feedback.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yep.
And there's no reason we couldn't do both, right? Get, do the first one and get info and then also.
Yeah, I would recommend we do both.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Uh, and now we will have a discussion. Is that the next step on this?
Yeah, if there's consensus among the commissioners that you'd like to go forward with both of those things, that would be sufficient for us to do that.
Okay, great. Um, anybody have comments?
Sounds like a good plan.
That's what I think. Sounds great.
Yeah, I agree. I think it'll help regularize the process and, and give both applicants and the commission what they need and add some predictability to the process as well.
Um, through the chair, Christie Corley has her hand up. I don't know for sure if it's on this item. Would you like to give her an opportunity to speak?
Looks like Anne's frozen.
And it's frozen, yes.
We'll just give her a second here.
Recognizing you, would you like to say something?
Oh, Anne, you were frozen for a second. Are you back?
So it's possible that's left over from before, huh?
Okay. It's, it's possible it's left over from before, but we can call on her and, oh, now, now her hand is down. So we can, I'm sorry, now her hand is back up. So I think if in doubt, we should give her an opportunity to speak if that's okay.
Yes, very good.
The thing, I think my previous question was, uh, it was $2,000 to not underground all utilities, but to underground if you want to get from 100 amps to 200 amps. You have to get an estimate for $2,000. Has that ever been negotiated? I'm not talking about all new builds. I'm just talking about going from the pole to the house as many people will want to go up in 200 amps. Has that been negotiated?
It, it, it really doesn't matter what kind of work you're asking PG&E to do. If you ask them to do engineering work, which they would have to do in order to issue you a quote, they just charge you what they charge. They don't negotiate that. They don't give you discounts. They don't, if anything, they'll quote you 2,000 and then charge you three. They, they are very difficult to work with on those sorts of things. I, I, we've tried a number of times at the sub, at the cable and undergrounding committee to have those sorts of conversations with them and they they just don't even understand the question.
So some people will pay that even though they won't do that. Correct?
Yes, people pay for the work that is required to go forward with the project that they're proposing. I mean, that's just the, how the, how, how they operate, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. I'm still learning. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our next topic, which is approval of our minutes from the March 17th meeting. Do people have comments or changes to suggest?
A couple. Read page 165, last paragraph, second sentence, she, it's quoting me, but it says she predicted that there is no reference. Let's just change that to questioned whether there is no reference. I wasn't really predicting. Um, there is, read page 168, very last line. And this is quoting John and I, but he said the fire station is in despite need of improvements. I think that's probably desperate need of improvements.
I caught that one too. I want you to know, I caught that. Yeah. Now I don't have anything to say, though.
Uh-huh.
Um, sorry to get ahead of you there, John. Um, and the last one. Uh, just have a look at, read page 169, the last paragraph. It's kind of talking about my, my feedback to the fire chief. Um, I, I recall saying I wanted, I affirmatively wanted to keep any code changes narrow because I don't see other places in town where the broader language is needed. So what's missing is an affirmative statement. I wanted to keep it narrow. Um, and then you can keep the rest. So I think that's it for me.
How about you, John? Anything else?
No.
Nicholas, do you have any?
Uh, I've got nothing.
Okay, and I had one on page 171. Um, and it's kind of two thirds down and it says vice your cup. So so just, you saw some of the permits issued in 2020 have not been built yet, but those are not listed in the report for that reason. Um, I'm not sure what my words were, but what I was bringing up is that the report that Laura showed and the permits that were issued, I know that some of those projects are not going to get built, like, you know, the cost was too high or something. So I would wanted to clarify that the report was for things approved, but it did not mean, we were not tracking or the government wasn't making us track in this case, the number that got built. So, um, I think I wanted to change it to, um, the, that I know that some of the permits are unlikely to get built for that first sentence. That makes sense.
Okay, yeah, we'll take that. And then Dylan did, I think staff found a typo as well.
Yes, I'm trying to find the red page. Unfortunately, it was, um, there was a transposing of the year. It was from 19, it was, it was 1987, but it was transposed in the, in the minutes to say 1978. Just trying to find a red page number right now.
And then we should also open it up to public comments as well.
Yeah, great. How about if I do that? Well, Dylan's looking for that.
And, and, oh, I'm sorry, Dylan, did you find it?
Uh, no, I was going to say, please, please, while I look for it. Thank you.
Um, so. Red page. Uh, 165. Halfway down. Uh, ordinance regime worked in 1978. Is that where you're looking at, Dylan?
Correct.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, and then Christie Corley has her hand up.
Okay, and any other public that wants to make comments on the minutes, raise your chat hand. Go ahead, Christie.
Hi, with my quote, um, on 168 of 172, I'm not sure what red page is, but if you could look at that. Christie said the code amendment should say fire station and not public building. I think what I was trying to say was, uh, I believe the fire station should be separate from adding public buildings to R1 codes. And she supported the expansion of the fire station and the code change for just the fire station.
I see, I see it on red page 168, about two thirds down. It says that the code amendment should say fire station and not public building.
Right, I was, yeah. Did you understand my correction there?
No, I didn't. It sounded like this sentence to me.
Okay, so, so both proposals are together. I see them as two separate. I would like in the, if it was approved, to see it as two separate discussions. One being adding the public buildings to R1 and one being acceptance of the fire station amendments. So. Do you understand that?
Uh-uh.
So Christie, I, I thought it actually captured exactly what you were trying to say. You, you, you think it's, it would be, you're, let me try to paraphrase. You think it would be defined, have it be limited and just say fire station and you'd be opposed to having it say public building.
Exactly.
Perfect. I think that's what we understood from that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're fine with these minutes. Is that the conclusion? With that sentence, I mean, there were other changes. Okay. All right, thanks. Uh, no more changes to the minutes, is that right? So I guess we're looking for a motion then to accept the minutes with the changes that we've just made.
I can move, we accept the meeting minutes for March 17th with the proposed changes.
Well, second.
Great. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't think so. Okay, great. And I think, is that everything? I think so. So, um, so we have a motion to adjourn then.
We don't have Craig.
Can do it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
All right, everyone.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Good night. Bye.